I'd like to call the order, the September 22nd meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michel and Annie.
Here.
Very good. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're fortunate tonight to have a scout here to lead us. So I'll ask him to come up to the podium and everyone else to rise and join us in the pledge. Matthew?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Next, we need approval of the.
Approval.
We have a motion in a second. We'd be on our toes. McCoy. Further discussion, seeing who won. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, and the agenda is approved. The next item is a proclamation for Cancer Awareness Month. And let me read the proclamation, and then I think we've got some interested citizens here, and there's some materials here to cover. So whereas cancer impacts the lives of thousands of Iowans and millions across the globe, and whereas cancer of various types affects those living here in Clive, and whereas September is designated as Cancer Awareness Month for childhood cancer, leukemia and lymphoma, ovarian cancer, prostate cancer, thyroid cancer, and uterine cancer, and whereas these and other types of cancer greatly impact our citizens, and whereas prevention and early diagnosis of cancer is essential to everyone's health. Now therefore, I proclaim September 2022 as Cancer Awareness Month in and for the city of Clive, and urge everyone to become informed of the signs of cancer, regularly confer with a healthcare professional, and follow recommended screenings and prevention measures. So with that in mind, Shawna, do you want to come forward? Or Lindsey, want to come in?
Lindsey is going to.
Lindsey. Lindsey, if you would come forward and identify yourself for the record and tell us some of the materials we have here and your interest in cancer.
Yes, absolutely. I wrote, I wrote a little something that I'm going to read, if that's okay.
That'd be fine.
And I know Eric and I have worked on boards before, and he always keeps me in line and reminds me of the book of rules. Yep, that one. So if I, if I get off course, put me back in line there. And also, he's very good at speeding things up because I tend to ramble about things. So I will stick to my script, and I will just read the information that I have for you. Mr. Mayor and Clive Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Lindsey Wiznewski, and I am an ovarian cancer survivor. Mr. Mayor, I applaud you and your swift action and leadership by creating a proclamation for the month of September to be deemed childhood cancer, leukemia, lymphoma, ovarian, thyroid, uterine cancer awareness. All cancers deserve to be highlighted, and cancer patients, survivors, and caretakers deserve recognition. I would like to take this opportunity to share some very important information regarding a cancer that I am too familiar with. Ovarian cancer is known as a silent cancer. Often symptoms are ignored or misdiagnosed. Like all cancers, early detection is essential and greatly improves overall prognosis. However, only 16% of all ovarian cancer is diagnosed at an early stage. And only 49% of all ovarian cancer patients have a five-year survival rate. That means 51% of women diagnosed with ovarian cancer will die within five years of diagnosis. Ovarian cancer, ovarian cancer accounts for more deaths than any other cancer of the female reproductive system. These statistics are directly related to the fact that there are no reliable screenings for ovarian cancer. Instead, women are responsible for advocating for their health when signs or symptoms occur. But how are women expected to advocate for their health when they are not educated on what to be looking for? This is where creating more awareness becomes essential. Some common symptoms for ovarian cancer include fatigue, back pain, pelvic or abdominal pain, upset stomach, increased trips to the restroom, trouble eating or feeling full quickly. Now you could be thinking, well, that could be a number of issues. That just seems all too common, and you are absolutely correct. I thought the same thing. As a 39-year-old woman and a mother of four children, I thought all my symptoms could only be one thing. I'm pregnant again. After hundreds of pregnancy tests that kept coming back negative, I pushed aside my symptoms and tried to ignore them until I couldn't ignore the pain anymore. I ended up in the ER with severe back pain, assuming it was kidney stones. After ultrasounds and CT scans, blood draws, numerous doctors' appointments, I still didn't have a concrete diagnosis. It wasn't until I had to have a radical hysterectomy was I diagnosed with ovarian cancer, stage one. Had I continued to ignore what my body was telling me, my cancer would have spread, and my prognosis would be much worse. So what can we do to help all women in our community? We must be better at educating all women of the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer. The median age at diagnosis is 63, which means half of those women diagnosed are younger than 63, and half are older. Ovarian cancer can truly happen to any woman at any age. Ovarian cancer is not just an older lady cancer as it's sometimes perceived. All women at any age are at risk. Mr. Mayor, this proclamation is a great first step in the right direction. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city of Clive in the efforts of educating and supporting women in our community. I hope that next September, we can continue to highlight this cancer. Teal is a dedicated color for ovarian cancer, and I look forward to lighting up Clive in teal in the future. I was going to make a joke about getting out our calendars and putting something in for August 2023, but I will just leave that there. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Lindsey. We appreciate you coming forward. And before you leave, I do have a copy of the official proclamation, and Pete, I think, will get a picture if he'd like.
Sure, sure. And I did, um, I do have some educational flyers that I'd like to leave, if we can put them around the facility. Thank you.
Look, you have your pin on. I gave you guys some pins, and there's some rituals about what everybody should know about ovarian cancer.
Pete, where do you want?
Let's go ahead and, uh, right here. And I'll ask Matt, if you just kind of duck down.
Okay, man. Total bombing.
Thank you very much.
Lindsey, thanks so much for sharing your story. You know, we served on the school board for three years together. And, and, uh, you know, St. Teresa's also, as you well know, another loss of a beautiful young 19-year-old girl that graduated with my older son. So clearly this, uh, I appreciate your efforts, and, you know, we participated in your run last year. Hopefully you'll keep doing that to bring awareness to this terrible disease, and really appreciate your efforts and everyone in your community.
Thank you, thank you. And I feel like, Clive, we are a thorough way for all of our community, so we could really spread a lot of awareness, given the opportunity. And thank you for bringing up Ava. She's, she is the fuel to my fire right now. We did lose a 19-year-old a couple of weeks ago to cancer. She was diagnosed less than a year ago, so to ovarian cancer. She did not, did not know that that's what it was at the time. So thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thanks, Lindsey.
Thanks, Lindsey.
The next item is one of mayoral privilege. Urbendale Mayor Bob Andwig and I sat next to each other in an event in which we heard speaker after speaker describing a great leader, a trailblazer, an inspiration, a wonderful colleague, a respected mentor, a tireless worker. These and other accolades were no surprise to us, and we wanted to show our appreciation as well. That recognition is coming in the form of a joint proclamation from the cities of Clive and Urbendale. And I'll call Urbendale Mayor Bob Andwig to come forward to help me in reading the proclamation. And Bob, if you'd start.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel Christina Stanger enlisted in the National Guard in April 1998, and while earning her bachelor's degree at Central College Go Dutch, enrolled and graduated from the Iowa Officers Candidate School Program in 2000 as an honor graduate. And whereas she was the first and only female commander of Iowa's OCS Company, was deployed to Mosul, Iraq in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom in March 2003, as well as mobilized for multiple state disasters and missions.
And whereas she attended Drake University Law School, graduating in 2005 with honors, is a practicing attorney and partner at Nymester Good Law Firm, and serves in a leadership position, a position with the Iowa State Bar Association, whereas she has served as a city of Clive city attorney since September 1, 2014.
So now therefore, I, Robert Andwig, mayor of the city of Urbendale.
And I, John Edwards, mayor of the city of Clive. On behalf of the city councils of Urbendale and Clive, declare Thursday, September 22nd, as Christina Stanger Day in the cities of Clive and Urbendale, and congratulate and thank Lieutenant Colonel Christina Stanger for her ability and passion to serve the cities of Clive and Urbendale, the state of Iowa, and the country. Family members here, I think we will get a photograph with the proclamation.
Why don't we line you all up so I can, you can stand right here, and I'll stand me out.
What's that?
That's why I did a little break. We'll do a bunch, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you for, you can see, go ahead. Thank you.
We'll have a day named after you.
Not yet.
The work's in progress.
Could be a long time. We're going to start with a morning. An hour.
The next, the next item would be citizen presentation, and I'll ask Pete to check and see if there's anyone online that wishes to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. While he does that, let me just read our pillars of support. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In connecting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. So do we have anyone online tonight who wants to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Do we have anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to do so? Seeing none, we'll move into presentations. We'll start with Rick.
Mayor and council, it's my privilege tonight to share another great story with you. It revolves around a life-saving award. Before I get into the details, I just want to back up a little bit and remind you about the criteria for the life-saving awards. They're scrutinized pretty heavily, and essentially it requires that, whether it's somebody in our community or one of our employees, takes actions that undoubtedly save a life. The person would have very likely passed away without their efforts, that they are eligible for the award. We have a committee, I believe Brian Helen is here tonight. We also have Brian Coster, Joel Adi, and Rob Matier that serve on that committee, and they do a fantastic job and evaluate these very, very seriously. So with the event to celebrate tonight, it comes from May 23rd of 2022. The event, the incident happened at 6815 Hickman Road in Urbendale, and Erin and Melissa were our ambulance crew that night. Urbendale Engine 411 and Clive Ambulance 323 responded for an adult male that was found unresponsive in a parking lot. Bystanders initiated CPR and were supported by instructions from the Westcom call taker. First responders arrived and confirmed the patient was not breathing and did not have a pulse. The crews continued CPR, established IVs for administering medications, defibrillated a total of three times, performed an advanced medicated procedure so that they were able to innovate and secure the airway. The patient regained a pulse after the third defibrillation. EMS crews continued to assist the patient with breathing and supplemental oxygen until they arrived at the hospital. This incident shows the extraordinary teamwork between bystanders initiating CPR, the call taker at Westcom providing CPR instructions, and the EMS care and teamwork provided by the Urbendale and Clive Fire Departments. So even though we're, we're going to invite the mayor down to present them with their awards, I do want to assure you that the Westcom call taker was presented an award through their organization, and the Urbendale crew was presented an award through their organization. And Mayor, the life-saving awards with the date described on the back are yours to present.
We can bring it all together right here.
You might have family too, Pete, afterwards.
Okay, we'll do one like this, and then we'll bring in the family. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. All right, let's all kind of squeeze in a little bit. Can't have, there we go. You sing. Chief will go first. We'll let you. Do one here, too. Three, one, two, three. Excellent. Thank you, folks.
Hey, Chief, I'd like to emphasize the, the point of, you know, the, your crew with Urbendale, and how much that has really worked out well, right? Is that person they saved, they don't care what logo's on the side of that truck.
No, they don't.
And it's been a wonderful partnership. And so I think that falls through the cracks so many times with our residents, but that you of all work so hard with other departments, especially the Urbendale. So thank you.
Yeah, we're going to be back at the end of October with another one. Congratulations.
Now, we're moving on to Public Works, and more good news from them on a process improvement. Jeff?
Mayor, Council, City, people here to talk to you about another one of our process improvements. And with us tonight, we have Kevin Brown, an operations specialist. As you've seen previously, we're very fortunate to have a very dedicated staff at Public Works. It's very astute at finding issues and finding resolutions to those issues. And Kevin's here to talk about our latest one. That, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Kevin, welcome.
Thank you. Kevin Brown, I've been with the city for a little over a year, roughly 35 years, as a civil servant in other cities. Basically, we had an issue where one of our departments was, when, we had a piece of equipment that we needed, and they were using it all the time. And any, and so there was an issue where we had to figure out how we could get the work done without taking it from them. So we went online, found a piece of equipment that would work. It was around $2,200. We figured that we, we could build that in-house for roughly 600 bucks. So there was about three or four of us that worked on it. And now we're able to, not only out of our roadway department, when they're working, we don't have to worry about waiting for them to be finished with this piece of equipment before we use it. So it's going to really help us to increase the amount of work we're able to do, and we're not sitting around waiting for a project to be finished because we're working, we're waiting, we're not waiting on them to be done with that piece of equipment. I don't know if you guys have any questions on it. I guess there were some pictures of. Sure. This here is, the upper one is a picture of the, they call it Mr. Manhole, and it cuts around the manholes. The, the plastic that's in it, there is a water device that sprays water on to keep the dust from going up and down. The lower one is the piece of, we turned a pallet into something that we could strap this water tank to, poses, poses a, a battery-powered Milwaukee pump. And that way, we can put it in any of our pickup trucks, and, and then we can use it a lot more than just the one that we have on the last page, which is this one on the trailer. And that's what we have normally used. Now, the one that's lower is how we're able to do it now. So we can put this, the lower one, in any of our pickup trucks and utilize it anytime we need to. So I think that's about it. If you guys have any questions.
Great innovation. Go ahead, Eric.
Kevin and Jeff, you know, Public Works has seemed to really excel at these process improvements. And I remember when you guys brought forward your, your project with the street signs, and it went through the better mousetrap of the state, state award right there. So really, congratulations to your crew. If you let them know that, very impressed by the work, and very innovative, very out of the box. We really appreciate everything you folks are doing.
Thank you.
Ted, real quick question, and I'll echo Eric's comments, but, and this is questions out of total ignorance on my part. How often do you have to cut around manhole covers?
So it's, it's a in, on the, this bobkit that we have, there's a mechanism that attaches to the front of it, and it has diamond blades that cut through the concrete. It's, it cuts in a circular manner. And then that exterior portion is just a water sprayer that sprays on it to keep the dust from coming up in there. So basically, what has happened is before, we used to use the, this upper one with a concrete truck, and it would cut it, you could only cut, you couldn't cut in a circle. So this has made it a lot easier for us. The hole is a lot smaller, and it's just easier to take out with a bob, or a backhoe to remove that whole large piece of concrete. It's just so much easier. You don't have to jackhammer it like we've had to do in the past.
And does that mean that we have to do quite frequently on, on manholes?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We, we have a, I guess you'd call it a list of repairs that we do, and we do so many every year. Yeah.
Great.
Customer Weaver, one thing that's really important with those, replacing those manholes is that's an easy way for infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. So if we do have seals that are going, you know, concrete that's starting to crumble around it, that, the tool that Kevin describes makes it a lot easier to make a fresh cut and a good seal around the new one that goes in and limits our infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. So, but a very important tool.
Very cool.
Again, congratulations. We appreciate the innovation.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next item we have is an Eagle Service project. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. While Matthew's bringing some of his presentation materials over, I'll briefly introduce the project. Earlier this spring, Matthew Sage, who is a Clive resident, approached me and said, "I've been reading about all of these water issues in the city of Clive, and I think I have a way that I could be helpful and advance the education and awareness and affection that Clive residents have for their very special watershed." So I'll leave it to Matthew to tell you about his concept that he came up with, building on an existing Clive program, and how much bigger he was able to make that.
Hello, I'm Matthew Sage from Troop 888, and I'm a life scout. Over here, you can see the problem of the Green Belt watershed has had a lot of trash in it, and that trash has mostly been from litter and other issues when people don't throw away their trash into trash cans or recycle. So the first thing to make sure that there was less trash, I would educate the people about the problem. In the first picture, I'm educating my Boy Scout troop with a slideshow about the watershed and what they can do to make it healthy. In the second picture, I'm talking to people on the Green Belt and at Clive Parks about what they can do. And in the last picture, before the QR code that takes you to a story map that the city of Clive has made, is my interview with WHO Channel 13 News. So that they could do an interview for the news about the watershed to reach the wider populace. Here are some pictures of the process to paint the murals. Here's a picture of all of the six murals lined up. And right next to it is one of the murals being sprayed, and we have several other pictures of that. To start the mural spraying process, we would place down the first stencil and then chalk out the outlines of that stencil and place down newspaper so that any overspray would be caught on the newspaper. And then we would place the stencil back down, put cardboard on the side so that it would minimize the amount of paint that got out, and spray the first layer, after which we would wait for it to dry and talk to people that were nearby. And then after that, we would continue spraying. Until at the end, we would take paint and touch up any mistakes made during the spraying process. And finally, we'd take a picture of it. In the center, I have a picture of the, of a map with all of the places that I painted, one through 20, that were done for the Eagle Scout project, are all numbered with a P, and then there were seven others that were painted outside of the project. Do you have any questions?
It's a great project, where we very much appreciate you helping the city out by, by doing that. Again, water is very, very important to us, particularly watershed season. I don't know if you want to say anything.
I think this is just fantastic. And you're right that we need more education. Where have the various murals gone? What are the locations?
In this, we have places like Drew Tilson, Bench, Lions Park, the Campbell Park. And then we have some like one that's outside of the public library just over there. And one at the Aquatic Center. But mostly they were all over the Green Belt and in parks.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Matthew was very strategic as he was thinking about the best way to get these beautiful murals in high pedestrian traffic areas. So people would walk past them, see them, and then see them again, and see them again, and see them again.
Very good.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I was just gonna say, you know, I ride the Green Belt all the time on my bike. I go running down there. I have seen these murals. I didn't know the story behind it. So I'm really, really happy to hear the story and really proud of you for what you've done. Great job.
Yeah, nice job, Matthew. And I think it's a really good recognition that how important it is for water management and where Clive sits in the Walnut Creek watershed. So it really brings good recognition to a lot of the stormwater management programs that we work on. And it's a big deal here in Clive. Second, I think it also shows really the importance of Boy Scouts and your Eagle Scout project and helping out the community of Clive. As a longtime scout master and scout supporter, and my son did a project for Clive as well, for his Eagle Scout project, really appreciate that. Think that it goes a long way towards building goodwill and really educating the public. So nice job.
Same. Thank you, first of all. And this is well distributed as well, which you must have put a lot of thought into, right? You cover very far west and very far east. I too have seen those all over. I did not know the backstory, which is important to share tonight. Education is a key to everything we're doing on awareness. So hopefully this will catch on with the Boy Scouts that you were with and maybe that crew down in the bottom right hand corner with that finished one and that they'll pick this up and you'll continue with the message in your next years. So thank you. And also we have cards here with the QR code.
Yeah. Matthew, actually, that was a, there were a number of steps in the process of actually painting the murals that Matthew innovated and improved himself. But the one that struck me right early in the project was when he showed up to do his first paintings and he had these cards ready to go so that when he was doing public education, he could then give his people that he came across a little takeaway, something they could even just snap with their phone and go to another site that we'd already created. Very, very good storytelling on his part.
Awesome, very good. Well done. Well, before you take it down, would you like a photograph? Pete's here and good mom and dad. Good mom and dad here.
That's, Matthew, introduce your folks real quick.
That's my mom and my dad.
Matthew, what did they have gone by that name for a long time?
Yes, yes, they have.
And it's a proper name. I agree. Well, good, yeah, let's come up and let's take a picture.
Take it from up here. There you go.
And Pete, I took some photos while Matthew was speaking, so I'll send them to you so you can send them to the parents in his, in his first speech, well, first speech in front of a council. Sounds like he's already famous with WHO.
Okay, let's get two of you there together. Yep, we'll start there. All right, now we'll go look right here. One, two, three, one, two, three.
I know we have to get the proud parents. Mr. Mom, Mrs. or Mrs. Mom, Mr. Dad, you need to be in.
Matthew, how'd you come up with the logo on that?
The, this is, this is a great story of just good building on good.
The actual design for that was done by students at Indian Hills Junior High. Two years ago, the very first murals like this were installed around the Indian Hills Junior High campus. We worked with the entire, at that time, eighth grade class to design multiple different examples. And then I worked with local artist John Bosley at Bos Prince in West Des Moines, who then synthesized those, then the students said, all right, we like this, let's keep adjusting. And then they picked their final version, head over to West, to Valley High School at that point, and to the industrial arts group class and say, if you've got a team that's looking for a project and they want to cut some metal, I've got some stencils that I need cut. They came up with the process then of how we would do five at a time, delivered them to the city. First ones are painted by the middle school students. Then Matthew takes the ball with his team and gets dozens more painted all over the city. And we still have the stencils in the paint. Public Works was a huge part of the success of this project as well. It's just good cascading over good over more.
Now, Matthew, you can tell everybody that when you were younger, you were able to graffiti the city. And it's okay. It's okay to graffiti.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Next, we have our consent items. A second. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And we'll post the vote. And that is approved. Next, we'll move on to action items and we have a Clive strategic plan update. Matt?
Thanks, Your Honor. Tonight, we have the full update for you, for your consideration from all the work that all of you have done, along with the executive team in the month of August, working with Lyle Summick as our facilitator to update your strategic plan. What's included in the documents is kind of, I didn't include every single one and we'll have more documents to come following your approval. But it really lays out your vision for the next 12 to 18 months of what you want to see your staff execute on and bring back to you for decisions over the next year, year and a half. These are all aligned with the now five goals that are outlined. We added a goal this year related to the 86th Street neighborhoods. And now we have those five goals and all of the actions that are in the documents with specific action outlines aligned with those five goals. And so staff has already started working on a number of these items. In fact, and I'll have probably my weekly update to you tomorrow of the tracking spreadsheet that you're very familiar with, that shows all of the actions where we're at. We're already working on a number of them. And in fact, you'll start seeing some of them at the next, the next couple of council meetings. But we're excited to get started and really appreciate all of the council's time in this process. I know it's a lot of days and interviews and can be a long night sometimes too, a long couple of nights, as well as my appreciation of the staff who do a lot of the upfront work in terms of putting their worksheets together, getting this information before you. But in the end, this really provides a nice clear direction for your staff. What's really important for this process is for us to understand what you want us to achieve for you, present back to you on behalf of the city. So, Your Honor, that's all I have. Don't have any questions. Just recommend council's approval of the update.
Move through.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will Kirk please post that vote? So this treesy plan update. Drumroll passes by vote of five to zero. Next, we have our reports and we'll start with you, Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to share my screen so you are all able to see this. As we were talking during strategic planning and at various other points in the Clark Street discussion, the council emphasized that we needed to make sure the neighborhood is familiar with what these are going to look like after they get planted. So the moment's here. We will be starting our planting activities next week. We have two weeks to complete it. Conditions are excellent. In advance of the planting, we've already raised the bottom of the cells by adding more mulch and amended soils and have gone out and trimmed the edges where the sod had been used to stabilize the area. Now they're trimmed back to the edge that will be where the steel edging for each of the cells is going to be installed. Steel edging will go in at the same time that these plants go in. The plants that you see on the slide at the top are the five species that will be planted in all of those. And this exact image, this entire deck was shared with the neighborhood as part of their normal weekly update that was sent on Friday. And we'll reemphasize it again when we send out information to the neighborhood next week, excuse me, tomorrow. We also included a few example pictures. So this is an image showing a bioretention cell that's in curbside area, doesn't have curb and got out of the ways that ours do. But it does show you what cone flowers, blue stem and blazing star look like when they're blooming in a beautiful setting. They won't look like this immediately, but we're planting over 3,000 plants across 15 different cells. We're committed to making sure we get good growth in this space with beautiful results. This is a device that I shared when I presented to the council a number of weeks ago of a much larger cell. I used it to show you what it looks, cells can look like when you've got some taller natives that aren't blooming yet. So at times, we're going to have mostly green that's in these cells as opposed to blooms. And then the last image we shared with the neighborhood was an example from the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership and Rain Campaign of different types of cells in other parts of Iowa. I included this for the neighborhood so they could see that this is a practice that's common in other parts of the state and also give them a look for what cells can look like at different points of maturity with different types of plantings. Any questions about where we're heading with the Clark Street cells? Yes, sir.
Pete, anytime you build a bioretention or a swell or a rain garden, initially after initial plantings, there's a lot of water that needs to be done to get those going. Is the city going to be responsible for that? Or are the citizens going to be responsible for that? Or is there a collaboration of both parties?
In the first year, the contractor is, has a one-year warranty on the plants. So when we get to fall 2023, if there's anything that's died, then they will be responsible. My understanding is their intention is to water aggressively to get the plants established during the growing season here in the fall. Contractor. And then after that one-year warranty period, when any dead plants are replaced, then the cells do become the responsibility of the city. These are good plants, natives that are excellent.
She agrees.
Yeah. So like all infrastructure, that's part of our maintenance that we need to make sure we're keeping an eye on good, healthy plants in the cells that they're growing, that they're also getting maintained with appropriate weeding, any kind of weed control that we want to put into them as well, like a pre-emergent that would help keep down some of those grasseds and other undesirable species. We're going to be learning about what that lift entails as we do the work.
Thank you. Other questions for Pete?
Do you have a question? Not on Clark Street. Did you have other?
One more update on soil quality restoration. I've got overlaps, but you were thinking so. Great news on soil quality restoration. Let me share my other image with you all here one moment. Okay, no need to go over all of the details that are on this sheet, but I'm pulling it up mostly so I can remember all the numbers as well. This shows the tracking we're doing on number of participants, number of square feet that we've treated at this point. Already with folks who have submitted payment, we are at over 100 residences that have chosen to participate. Four of those are in the Harbach Program area, so it's a little bit different arrangement. But this exceeds the goal that we had set for number of residences. Where we haven't quite crossed the threshold yet of our, of our, of our goal is, where are we with total square feet that have been treated? Today, we're at a staggering 841,876 square feet across the entire city of Clive that have been treated. But we set a goal for ourselves to get pretty darn close to a million. Right now, we, the goal was, scroll up here to the top, was 996158. That leaves us with another 150,000 roughly to get done. Good news. As of tomorrow, I hope I've got another over 100,000 further coming on board, on top of some that have already signed up for this second phase that we're going to be doing in October. So the first two weeks of October, our crews will be back out doing soil quality restorations. I want to compliment Quality Cut Lawn Care. They've done wonderful work. The response among your constituents has been extremely positive. And so much so that was telling, showing Councilman Micklinani here earlier before the, the meeting started, we've got over 42 people currently, households currently signed up for the 2023 waiting list. So this has been a wonderful project. And I had a particularly good day last week when I was out. I'll go out and check these along with representatives from Hope County to make sure they got done right. Something's not right, we call up the contractor and they've done a wonderful job coming back, make it right. One point during that day, I was out actually visiting a Clive colleague of mine, her house in the western part of the city. As I'm out there doing the work, talking to her husband, raking out a few places. Pete, here's some tomatoes. Thanks for coming to doing this raking work for me. Go to another house, Dr. Shaw's house over in Country Club neighborhood. And he wants to walk and do the raking and kind of picking up some of the bigger pieces with me as well. We walked together for about 45 minutes in his yard, not because it took 45 minutes to do it, but just because the conversation was so much fun. I've had so many moments where I've been able to talk to residents about what we're doing. They've given me ideas on how we can keep doing things, do things better. The affection and the enthusiasm around water in Clive among your constituents is high and is going higher. And that's given us something really exciting to build on as we go into the next few months, finish this out and then go and work with our partners over in the Harbach neighborhood, get them great results as well, and then talk about how we're going to leap into 2023, fall 2023, with potentially more of these types of soil quality cost shares. So very, very happy to report such good results.
And those that had the application first week, are they mowing yet or?
They are. I'm actually going back and picking up signs that were part of the first wave so I can deploy them on the eastern part in some of these new houses as well. I love taking pictures because the conditions have been good, folks have been watering, and they are getting beautiful results.
Yeah, my water bill is going to be a mortgage payment next month. But I would agree with Pete. I've spoken to a bunch of my neighbors. They are very intrigued by this. And the signs were a stroke of genius, by the way, because lots of people, while I walk in their dogs, they stop checking out, read the signs. And there's a lot of genuine interest in this for, and what's really going to be interesting is how, how the lawn shows in the spring, right? As everything starts coming up. But I know I've got a bunch of neighbors who are very interested in it and I'm sure already on that list. So.
Very good. Anything else, Pete?
No, Your Honor, any questions?
Can we get a quick update on Indian Hills Woods and the project that's going on there? And I haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors. How is that project going at this point?
Right, so council directed staff to go out and make sure we were knocking doors before we got into the program, right after we had our neighborhood meeting. I knocked all the doors from sidewalk, the little bridge, all the way down to Lincoln and on the other side of Lincoln, both sides, east and west. Was able to connect with just about everybody in the neighborhood. If I didn't, I left them a letter with my contact information. I do want to give a shout out to the Public Works and Parks team in particular. One of the households, just so happened when we were doing that grubbing work back there, which was the first part of getting the program, the project started again, kicking up quite a bit of dust and crud, well, this household was going to be hosting a rehearsal dinner that Friday night. And they understood the work needed to be done, but they were planning on setting up all Friday. And if we were grubbing behind their house, we were going to be creating a lot of mess. Jason Stevens, Joel Paskey, when I told them, hey, I know this is going to put a sort of a kink in the plans, is there something we can do? Both of them said immediately, no problem. We can steer clear of that area. Family was thrilled, just thrilled. Would we have really created a huge hassle? I don't know, but the fact that we went the extra effort is what everybody needs to, I think, take away from that because it was a great show of earning trust by our, by these two staff people. So I appreciate that very much. Since then, it's just been sort of ones and twos, questions I've had from folks who want to get on the distribution list. So I want to keep it up, keep getting updated on what's happening with the project. Where are we actually with the work? Through the rest of this week, we're going to continue grubbing, stumps and doing some other tree clearing. There was one other large tree that Joel told me today that had to be brought down just because in the course of doing some of the dirt work, we're just going to take out so much of the root structure that it wouldn't be able to survive. They were going to get in touch with another resident that had planted some trees in the park to see if there was a way we might be able to save those. So that intentionality is the way that our teammates are approaching the project right now. But no complaints so far with what's being presented. But no complaints so far with what's being presented, what's, but, but speaking of.
Thank you. Street kind. Real quick, uh, just wanted to mention, had a quick kind of initial conversation with the West Point, the new West Point Superintendent. Uh, and we're, we're scheduling, we're working on scheduling a follow-up longer conversation. So again, getting some good, you know, positive right direction movement, but still a little early stages. Only other thing I was going to add is the SQR program, it is, you know, kind of echoing what Ted was saying. The signs are awesome. I do have people stopping me when I'm out in the yard saying, hey, what is that? Right? Um, so that is really cool. Um, and it, it, and it's a messy process, right? You know, you, you don't realize it until they're out there and they're like, oh, there's a lot of dirt in my driveway.
It stinks.
And yeah, it's not, it's not always the best smelling, but the, I will say the crew did a fantastic job of cleaning it up after, you know, getting it all back the way it was and, and better, obviously. So. That's it for tonight.
A couple of things. So Icon Water Trails, uh, you may have seen the report that, um, we were awarded a seven million dollar grant by the state of Iowa, by the Destination Iowa Grant that the governor provided. So that was obviously huge. Um, that gets us to, um, about ninety-five million dollars total. That has been raised, uh, both private and public, gets us to about between seventy-five and eighty percent of our ultimate goal of, of about a hundred and twenty-five million. So, uh, it's still a little ways to go on the fundraising, but, um, definitely that was a, a big boon, uh, to the project itself. High-level site design was, has been, um, produced for the three main river experiences. Center Street, Scott Street and Floor Drive. Um, so it's got everything from like where the Outfitter Operations Center is going to be, where you can rent the kayaks and all that kind of stuff. Cafe, pub, uh, the spectator viewing, um, at Floor Drive is going to be a public beach, food truck area, parking, all those kinds of things that, so all the site design aspects to that. Uh, this can be an adventure park with zip line, uh, at the Center Street, um, and, and things of that nature. And then they've updated the usage projections, uh, for the first five years along with the revenue projections. And it is, uh, at least at this point, they're still, uh, expecting, uh, operations, uh, in the, to be in the black in year one. So, uh, we'll see. Um, you know, obviously it doesn't cover all, all the capital expenses, but, um, they do expect it to, um, to at least be revenue neutral, uh, really from, from the year one on. So that's Icon. MPO, we, we did get into a, a long discussion about the MPO's role in Icon. Um, and MPO is the one who is receiving the twenty-five million dollar build grant from the federal government. Um, and then distributing that to Icon. That does of course come with strings attached. Things like the, all three projects have to be initiated by twenty twenty-seven. And if the projects are not all three completed, they, uh, there's a certain portion that has to be paid back. And so there is some liability there. There's a lot of concerns by some of the board members. With respect to that, our executive director claims that we're indemnified or, but, and mostly covered through insurance. I think there's some skepticism there. Um, so long discussion on that, but, uh, but it is still moving forward. We were presented with a, a model bike ordinance and, um, personal transportation device ordinance that was also taken to the MAC, I believe. You know, initially when I heard about it, the hope was that it would help us with our trails and what we had talked about as strategic planning. But as we got the details, it was much more about, uh, roadway, um, model bike ordinance and the, the, again, that personal transportation device, the e-bikes and stuff like that, and how they interact with vehicles and street signs and all that. So not as applicable for us, but, um, that did come down. And then lastly, uh, FEMA has opened up the applications for the next round of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding, which includes the BRIC, which is the, uh, Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities. Um, and so though that's now opened and they're due by December twenty-seventh, so we just need to make sure that we're, we're on that. And I'm sure staff is, but just bringing it up.
But that's an interesting one on that grant, right? And that there's that confusion on. Never heard it.
Which one?
The, the, if you don't use it by twenty twenty-seven, there's some insurance for that. Who's MPO's legal counsel? And have they weighed in?
Scott, what's his name? I can't remember last name. Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, he did. And the, the claim is that i- if there's going to be any liability, it will be very nominal. Um, but their belief is that there, there isn't, um, any real significant liability to the MPO.
And is there overhead cost for that grant to be run by MPO? Is MPO collecting?
Yes, but it's, it's again fairly nominal and, and so, yeah, there's no charge involved in that. It's one of those where the MPO was already established before Icon was established. And it was a means for getting that grant and then distributing it to Icon. And so, um, it was felt that the MPO was in the best position to do that as a regional twenty-eighty, so. But, um, our friend Joe Gatto brought up some real concerns and, um, voiced them, you know, pretty, uh, pretty loudly. Yeah, so.
That's Joe's quiet voice.
Yeah, that's right. So it was a good, it was a good discussion and, and, you know, I mean, he brought up good points and, um, made the full board aware of. Hey, this is, uh, this is some of our risk that, that we were looking at. So, um, and with the way things are going with the bids and all of that, you know, there, there is some risk there, right? That, and it's all three projects have to be completed.
What, what year?
They didn't give a specific date. It had, they have to be started by twenty twenty-seven. They didn't, I, I didn't hear a date as to when it has to be done. Right, yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, I think it should be fairly substantial, but yeah, yeah, I'll find out. That's a good question. That's all I have.
Thanks Ted. Eric.
Uh, no reports. I didn't want to personally congratulate Christina, uh, you know, as, uh, a few people understand the level of time and dedication. And as a, a fellow graduate of, uh, Officer Kennedy School from the Army Military Academy and then, you know, and, and Ted, uh, you as well with your long career, very few people understand the hours and dedication. And especially when you look at a deployment, uh, time away from home. So really Christina, congratulations on a tremendous career. Uh, and it's a real honor for you. So I just want to say congratulations.
Well, the Bravo Board met yesterday morning and announced that the Bravo Gala will be on February fourth. So get your calendars marked for that. They said the tickets would go on sale in October. So be checking your calendar. I'm sure Matt will get notified about that. They also said that an announcement will be coming about art projects that will basically be related to the Icon Water Trails projects. And, um, each community will be eligible to apply for one art project in one location. The total grant dollars available are two hundred and fifty thousand that will come through Bravo. And you can ask for support for up to half the cost of an art project. So hopefully we'll be, um, getting ready to look at doing that. Um, I also wanted to mention attending the D Mark presentation yesterday. Pete was there also. All of us, I think, were invited just to hear an update and see their improved facility. And it was really interesting. They were kind of showing who is taking advantage of the pantries and they were saying that basically these are only the people who would go for a larger, um, we're type of pickup, which you can only do every so often. But, um, not those who would go on an everyday basis. They make bread and some other things available every day. But they, when they showed the slide for Clive, there was a, a pretty good disparity of, you know, they were showing racial impacts and disparities and we had, um, they were pretty interested in the Clive slide. I don't know how to, to describe it really, but, um, nothing that we could necessarily change, but do you remember what the?
Yeah, it, it showed relative to the total population, the population that is using the pantry and what the self-reported races of those folks using. But to the Councilwoman's point, it was for those one-month pickups, not your daily pickups that you could do. So the, uh, the other part of the data with Clive is that because of our unique geography of where the pantry is located, we get folks from multiple different cities, not just Clive. And then we also get a lot of folks who live, who use the pantry, who are in some of our most diverse neighborhoods. So I'm not sure, I, I think there's a pretty strong geographic influence on the way that that pie chart looks for Clive just because we have such a unique shape. The other big headline that came from that report was the Clive Pantry has seen some of the largest uptick in use compared to the rest of the D Mark pantry network. Now, we're not a huge facility. I think they were doing this as a percentage of year over year. So gross were still probably much lower than some of their bigger facilities, but the need is increasing. So much so across the entire network that August twenty twenty-two numbers are comparable to what they usually think of as their peak in a normal year. The peak month in a normal year for them though is in November. And it rises to that peak in November. Well, if we're already at what we'd consider a peak in August, you can imagine that it's going to be a new record set by the time we get to September and then again in October and then again in November. So the need is great. Inflation's hurting a lot of people. They also, a great point, Councilman, because they said a lot of folks who are using the big monthly pickup of groceries aren't using it every month. Some are just using it a few other times of, uh, a year. They're putting together a patchwork of ways to kind of stay on top of things. A lot of folks in the last twelve months are using pantries for the very first time.
You can tell you, uh, I volunteer there once a month to do the food pantry and then the last two times that I've, where you, you help, uh, folks shop. Last two times that I've been there, I've, we've done the most in the night, uh, in three hours in terms of taking people through the pantry that I've ever had volunteering there, the last two times that I've been there. So it's, there's definitely a substantial uptick and there has been a lot of new, new folks that you kind of is your, there's a certain group, but you, you know, people you're, you get familiar with, but the last time in particular, I think ha- half that I remember taking through were brand new.
And then the last thing I wanted to mention, Matt put in his, um, update last week that we had, have this, um, program coming up at the Palms to hear about the Green Belt landing. I just really like to encourage everybody to try to get there. I think we need to show as elected officials our support for that project. It'll be a good chance to hear what members of the community are being asked to support.
Matt, could you put a reminder in your email?
I will. Oh, yes. And it was on my list. So thank you. Yes, I would hi- and highly encourage if you have some folks that you want to invite. Um, I know the mayor sent an email out to all our boarding commission members. Um, I've sent some targeted ones out to, um, some of our current, uh, folks that have already committed. And we're actually going to have a few of them speak, uh, and a representative from NCMIC Group and another individual kind of do during the brief program that we'll have, talk a little bit about why they invested in the project. Um, and a number of other folks that are coming, Mid America, Catherine, Karen from Mid America is going to, is planning to be there who also, you know, they committed two hundred thousand to the project. So we're going to have a mix of kind of the people that have committed. And then we're also, of course, inviting the people that we want to also entice into, uh, supporting the project. And so, uh, if you can identify those folks or people that you think want to see a cool experience in an IMAX theater of seeing our project on a really, really massive screen and then, uh, have some nice networking time after that. Again, thanks to Russ Van Ornsdale for giving us that kind of unique opportunity, um, to do that in between shows. So if you've got a little bit of time, we'll be in the theater and then we'll be out because they'll have a show coming up later. But I highly encourage you, if you're going to just, even just identify a couple of people, we've got, we've had some really good RSVPs so far. I know Bob Forte's been really doing a lot of, a lot of work to help us with that and yes, he is, he is. And so, uh, he's been helping us out with that too. So, um, I think I saw an email from him today that our RSVP numbers are looking, we're well over twenty already. We'd love to get at least fifty, maybe more, um, uh, for that event. So if you've got folks to invite.
Yeah, we have a digital graphic that you can send out and invite that you can email out to folks. And I know I sent it out to probably thirty people.
Did that get fixed with the right email?
It did. I resent it on Saturday. Uh, we had, we had one, one number in Bob's email wrong that we had to fix. So, but I'll, the one I'll resend tomorrow is the right one. And the one I sent Saturday morning to you all was the right one.
Well, Matt, and we, I know we kind of have a limit of how many people we can have there, just, I, I'm assuming.
Theater holds three hundred people.
Okay, well, because I was going to, because I can send it to more, but we, on the committee that we're on, we were asked only ask five. So.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
I still send it out to like thirty, but.
They were trying to make it man as a bull.
Yes, what I was, what I would say is if you, particularly folks that you think would be interested in the donation side of the opportunities. If you have some that are in mind, those are the, uh.
And that's how I sent it.
Those are the keys. Yeah. So we, we have through, room for three hundred in the theater. The, the restaurant would be a little bit tighter for the networking after, but again, our hope was between fifty and a hundred is what we were shooting for. So thank you for that, Susan, mentioning that.
Anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
Michael, three quick items. Uh, WRA met, um, we're still working on the governance change uh, with Jody Smith and EJ Giovinetti and myself on a committee. Uh, also with that comes the pending operating contract, uh, which is going to be due here soon. Which puts the whole board under a interesting scenario. The board has chose to have an outside, uh, legal counsel now for the board alone, um, instead of, uh, WRA's legal counsel. Uh, and then their intentions are to put the operating contract out for somewhat of a soft, uh, RFP. Des Moines thinks that that might be a little bluff or a little bit of premature. Des Moines has always run the contracting piece. Some of the folks that have been around for a while, uh, suggest that it should be competitive at best. And it's Des Moines to lose, uh, rather than the other way. So that'll be interesting. It's a, it's a quite interesting dynamics down at that board right now, uh, with some of this discussion happening. Dart, uh, lots of things happened in a dart. I did pitch at Exec Finance or at Exec Board for Dart. That, uh, Clive would like to look at a model of Dart on demand. And see if we could be a good candidate for that. That was Tuesday. No, I'm sorry. That was yesterday at lunch. I pitched that, so they're going to look into what that looks like and get back to us. I said the, that this council, uh, and mayor were interested in what that might look like as an option. Uh, and again, that's that dollar fifty ride anywhere inside your service area type thing. So, um, it, it's working well, like Kelly Whiting, I mean, be an example for you and the boys, you send them to work, uh, in a dart for a dollar fifty or whatever, you know. So it's an interesting model. So, uh, but Dart's biggest point, uh, it's just so you don't get, um, surprised by this. It might hit the mo- news, maybe not. Uh, buses, uh, the bus, seven buses, the EV buses have been sidelined uh, for Dart at this point, uh, too many maintenance problems. Not so much with the EV system, uh, but just the production piece of those. And it is based on hours like a lot of big equipment is instead of mileage and such. And so they've sidelined them so they don't hit that hours of in-service and they can get warranty. There's some pushback and forth between Proterra, the bus manufacturer and Dart. Dart has asked in a legal letter, we'd like all new buses. That's the starting point. Uh, and, but the uptime on those things are somewhere around thirty-seven or forty percent in-service time. Where their other fleet is eighty-some percent in-service time. So, uh, a setback for EV if it's, the story's told wrong, right? Because it's not about the batteries or the EV system. It's more about how it's manufactured. Uh, last thing on compost, I'd make a comment that Pete was talking about, compost price, uh, program. I happen to know a little inside baseball on it. The compost, all but one house received the top-rated MWA Grow Gold compost with all-natural yard waste as material. One house received Prairie Meadows horse waste. Ted, you decide on who got the horse waste. That is all there.
I don't know who could top that.
I do want to say thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to you and Mayor Andewig for that surprise. And to all you sneaky peats that were a part of that. It was an honor, of course, to serve and an honor to serve the city of Clive. It was an honor, of course, to serve and an honor to serve the city of Clive for the last 16 years. To be among, you know, these civil servants here on this dais is a true blessing for me. You know, there's a quote that says, you know, your reward in life is judged by the amount of people you have served. And I just am honored to continue to serve alongside you for the citizens of Clive and your team. So thank you for that surprise and thank you for your support all those years and to many more.
Very good. Thank you. So now, so now that she's retired, we've been throwing a lot of potential code updates at her. So Matthew has been working with our new codifier, Iowa Codification on a number of kind of more cleanup items in the code. They have some questions for us and things that we could organize a little bit better. And Matthew's been doing a great job of working through that with departments. And then also having Christina weigh in on a number of them. Some of it's legislative updates too as well. Iowa Codification has been doing some good work, but we're going to, at some point, be bringing that back kind of as a package deal to kind of clean up a number of items in the code that they've identified for us. So that'll be coming forward. So just wanted you not to be surprised by that, but that'll be coming at some point over the next couple of months. But Matthew's been doing a lot of hard work on that. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Also, again, the future upcoming dates, our next council meeting, we've got the extra weekend. There won't be until 10:13. So just to mention of the National Civility Summit.
Has been postponed till December the 7th.
Okay.
That's what you were going to say, right?
Yep, that's, there you go.
December the 7th. She can remember.
Okay. I will note that in my weekly update. Then last thing, Horizon Center, you'll see in my weekly update tomorrow to you a letter that they've sent out to nearby residents working on the spring, next spring's music festival, Bluegrass Festival. So they're doing a neighborhood night there at Horizon Center. You'll see the whole letter and invite that they put together. I think it's next Wednesday at 5:30 where they're having everybody from the neighborhood. And we helped them, kind of gave them a mailing list of folks to be sure to reach out to. So staff's been coordinating with them, but they're doing their, their work on that. And also you'll hear this likely from Supervisor Brown now, when he's here at our next meeting to do his annual update. They're also doing, looking at doing a big winter event, kind of holiday event there from Thanksgiving to Christmas with Dorothy's House. As a kind of a charity benefactor from, it's kind of like Festival of Trees, but more like family, like family activities where they kind of have it inside and inside snowball fight, kind of fun stuff for families. So kind of an interesting concept of what we've been impressed with Horizon Center now, the, the new leadership and management of finding different kinds of programming, creative ways to use that facility. And Doug updated the staff today that they're, they're nearing the, the completion of their phased one improvements. That was a part of the agreement that you all adopted. So again, starting to see some good movement there, but wanted to make you aware of all that.
Are we going to have any city representation at that neighborhood meeting with Horizon? Or is that something we should stay away from or?
I don't think it's anything that you necessarily stay away from. We won't have any staff there that I'm aware of that night. So, but I would say that that doesn't, wouldn't stop any of you from attending if you wanted to.
Would just be kind of interesting to see what the tone of that is like.
Right.
Based off the history.
Yeah.
I, I nominate McCoy to go.
It's a party I'm in.
And so, yeah, there wasn't anything, you know, set in stone there in terms of staff representation. If I'm, if I can move some things around, I was going to pop in because I'm actually curious to see what the inside looks like because I haven't been in there in a while. And they're going to be doing a tour, I think, right, Doug, for the folks of the improvements they've been making inside the building. I'm, I might just go just from that, that perspective. But, but again, you'll see the invite. We'll have all the details in it in my email tomorrow.
My grandson and I will crash the party.
There you go, grandpa.
Have to stay awake.
Start them early.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, Eric.
Matt, a couple, a couple of things here. On September 8th, we approved $3,750 for executive coaching for Police Department for Sarah and Noel Wilson. On September 22nd, we approved another $3,750 for executive coaching for Police Department for Sarah and Noel Wilson.
That's the same thing. One was the payment, the other was the contract approval of that. That's the same. It's only one, $1,370 expense.
It was approved in two separate bills.
So it would have been on my monthly report and then in the bill list.
It was in the bill list for, for both September 8th and September 22nd.
I'll definitely look at that.
So it was on both. So it was on both for September 22nd. I guess my question is, are we planning to do executive coaching at the same figure for leisure services with the same contractor?
No.
Are we planning on doing executive coaching for Fire Department for the same contractor?
Potentially for the Fire Department, yes.
Are we planning on spending the same amount for executive coaching for Public Works?
No.
And then I'd like to know how much we spent year to date for Sarah and Noel Wilson. And I'd also like to know what our end game is. This is, we've discussed at length on strategic planning. We planning, do we have a budget amount for next year? I'd like to know where this one has come from. So coming from the general fund, I think we need some more transparency on this.
Okay.
Anything else, Eric?
Nope. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order tonight? Otherwise, we will adjourn at 7:16. Thank you all.